Mayor, this is Lawrence Progins with the legal department.
Uh huh.
I was gonna say that although we do have a quorum of our planning and zoning commission available, the person that ran the last planning and zoning mission for us was Ms. Ashley Boswell. She's not currently in this meeting. As the, I think the privilege is yours as the mayor to appoint somebody to be the chair for planning and zoning or to serve in that capacity for this meeting. So you have Ms. Cade, you have Mr. Dansby, Mr. Wicker, and...
Well, while Wicker is the chairman.
Well, I don't know, I think Mr. Wicker's gonna say something about that real quick, so let's...
I'm not sure that, I'm having technical problems still on my end. I've got a very slow internet connection, so I would appreciate if someone else could handle it.
Mayor, we would ask you to ask Ms. Cade, Mr. Earls, or Mr. Dansby to serve in that capacity.
I'm looking at who is here, Lonnie? Could you serve in that position, Lonnie?
Yes, sir, that's fine, thank you.
Okay. We can switch back when Lonnie gets his internet connection back in place. Over the chairman of the planning is he, Lonnie, you ready to go?
Yes, sir, I'm ready.
Okay. I think we have a quorum on the council, I'll see one, two, three, four. I haven't heard from Hernandez. From Woody Owens a while ago.
Mayor, we have six members present, we have a quorum.
Okay, good. Except for Perez.
Did we hear back from Josh yet with respect to whether or not they were able, excuse me, to get the audio feed on the Facebook, I mean on the YouTube?
Josh, do you direct the net?
I don't think we have, but I can check it real quickly and just see if it's streaming on my side.
Danny, okay.
They can hear us now.
They can hear us now?
They can hear us, Mayor.
Okay, yes, yeah, it doesn't seem like it's streaming now.
We had the audio muted until everybody was ready to go live.
How far does audio go, back down, Wicker?
I'm sorry?
We're on it now.
Okay.
Okay.
Can we have everyone mute themselves also unless they're talking? I've just been hearing a lot of background noise and phones going off.
Are we ready to go? Okay. I see a lot of heads nodding yes. Let me open a joint meeting, special meeting, joint special meeting, the City Council of Fairland, Monday, November, May the 11th, 2020. And we're approaching pretty close to 6:30 short time. This is a real telephone and video conference. We will work from that perspective and conduct our activities in that respect. Let me call to order the regular meeting of the special, joint special meeting, and the roll call for the city council. Governor Longdon. President Caballin.
I'm here, Mayor.
President Little.
Here, Mayor.
President Hernandez.
Here, ready to go, Mayor.
All right. Moore.
Here, Mayor.
Councilmember Owens.
Here.
Okay. Adam Secretary, I will certify a quorum in the city council. Moving to item number three, roll call for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Chairman Laddie?
Commissioner Earl?
Present.
Commissioner Wicker?
Present.
Commissioner Dansby?
Present.
I believe we're missing Commissioner Boswell and Commissioner Juarez, and I'm here, Commissioner Kay, so that gives us a quorum of the planning and zoning commissioner, Mayor. Commissioner, thank you.
That information in the record. Let's move to item number four on our agenda, which will be introduction of agenda and format of a hearing, staff.
Yes, Mayor, it's pulling up. First, there will be a call to order, then staff report, followed by applicant presentation, then we'll have public comments in either support or opposition to. At that time, you will state your name and address for the record. Please be brief and to the point within a three-minute timeframe. Then council, commission, and staff will have their discussion, and city council will vote afterwards to either approve a request as presented, approve with conditions, deny the request, or table the request. For tonight's agenda, we only have the one conditional use permit, which is CUP 20-00005. This is for an assisted living facility within Neighborhood Services District at 3205 Dixie Farm Road. Mayor, we'll pass it back to you.
Okay. Moving in our agenda to item, finish out a joint special meeting number one. Councilmember Cade, would you present this for our consideration as chair? Joint special meeting number one.
Yes, Mayor. This is a request by Alan Mueller, applicant on behalf of G and G Partners LLC owner, for approval of a conditional use permit to allow an assisted living center within the Neighborhood Services District on approximately 9.61 acres. The general location is 3205 Dixie Farm Road. Staff report?
I complete your introduction of the meeting.
Yes, sir.
Moving in our agenda to item A, which is application information case summary. Back to staff report. Griggs?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Again, this is a request for approval of a conditional use permit for assisted within the Neighborhood Service, also known as NS, on approximately 9.61 acres of land. Staff has received one letter of support for the request and one letter of opposition, also a couple of phone calls. Subject property is located on the south side of Dixie Farm Road at 3205 Dixie Farm Road, approximately 750 feet from the intersection of Dixie Farm Road and, and now, which street? You can move to the next slide. The subject property is currently developed as 1,660 square foot, single-family residence built in 1963, according to Brazoria County appraisal district. The site is abutted by Walmart and Home Depot stores from the northwest and the northeast, respectively, and by single-family residences from the west and south side. Assisted living is defined in the Unified Development Code as a congregate residence facility for four or more elderly, normally over 55 years of age, regardless of legal relationship, who need limited assistance with daily living activities. Units may be attached or detached, single-family or double occupancy, and may include limited or full kitchen facilities. Full-time medical or nursing care is not typically provided by the facility, but may be privately arranged for by the individual residents. The Neighborhood District is intended, as you can see on the slide here, the Property Zone Neighborhood Service, is intended to permit a limited area of service establishment or retail stores for the benefit of adjacent and nearby residential development without changing the character of the residential neighborhood. There's currently one assisted living facility within half a mile, and two within two miles of the proposed facility. That's to kind of give you perspective of how many that are within the area. The subject property is designated on the future land use map, the second slide, the next slide, as retail offices and services, which is intended to allow variety of office and retail development. Dixie Farm is designated on the thoroughfare plan as a major thoroughfare with sufficient width. Major thoroughfares are designed with a minimum right-of-way of 120 feet. The proposed use is consistent with the thoroughfare plan. If you could switch to the next slide, the applicant proposes to develop approximately 34,000 square foot, single-story, assisted living facility containing approximately 32 units. As you can see, it's shown with the brown color, that's the facility on the slide. The remainder of the slide, which is shown in green, will be reserved for future development. There was one concern that was raised by the Development Committee, and that was regards to the portion of the property. The layout appears to show a lot towards the rear of the property, and should the applicant wish to maintain this configuration, then a driveway and particularly a private street would have to be required to serve that lot, or a variance from the P and Z would be required for a flat lot. Staff finds the proposed use generally meets established criteria, if you can move to the, actually before I move to the recommendations section, here you have some aerial or actual renderings of the proposed facility. That's one, that's looking directly towards the entrance. The second slide will be looking directly towards the facility itself, and the next one would be another one from the side. You can see it's a single-story facility with pitch roofs and appears to be masonry product on the elevations. Staff finds the proposed use generally meets established criteria for approval, including consistency with the policies, the comprehensive plan, including the future land use map and the thoroughfare plan. Assisted living is considered low-intensity use that provides transition between the commercial uses and residential uses. And a planted landscape buffer would be of a 25 in width with six-foot opaque fence, or a 30-foot landscape buffer will be required along the south and east sides abutting the residential properties. Therefore, staff recommends approval of their requested CUP with the following condition, and that condition is that the proposed use shall be constructed in conformance, in substantial conformance to their architectural style and materials in the attached renderings as provided by the applicant. And that concludes the staff report.
Okay. Moving in our agenda, item number two, which will provide an opportunity for the applicant to make a presentation.
Oh, I think there might be a delay, are you able to hear me? Okay. I see a head nod, so I will proceed. Again, okay, thank you. All right, again, this is Alan Mueller, I'm representing property owner this morning. Business address here in Fairland is 4201 Broadway. I'm sure all of y'all know this, but just a reminder for everybody that, you know, a CUP would authorize this additional use, you know, on top of all of the other uses that are allowed by right already in the neighborhood zone, so it doesn't preclude all those others, just, you know, add this additional use if it's approved. And as has been mentioned, the proposed facility is a single-story assisted living, memory care facility, approximately 34,000 square feet with 32 individual units. The single story was stipulated in our application, so we're expecting that that would be an understood condition as well if this were to be approved. The site plan that you have, I hope you recognize it is preliminary, but this is the intention, but those future development areas are undetermined and would be probably some Neighborhood Service use in the future, but no specific use for those are planned right now. The entrance that we have for that main road does line up with an existing median opening on Dixie Farm Road and is directly across from the driveway for over the Walmart. So as y'all know, the CUP has seven criteria that should be considered for approval, and we've outlined how we comply with those in our letter of intent, I believe that's on page 15 of 34 in your staff report packet. As has been mentioned, the proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the current zoning. We believe as a single-story residential type, you know, quiet use, this also would be very compatible with adjacent development. Assisted living, memory care facilities also generate minimal traffic and noise compared to uses that are authorized by right, by right, excuse me, in Neighborhood Service. And just for a little bit of comparison, from the Institute of Traffic Engineers Trip Generation Manual, all of these numbers are in trips per day, per 1,000 square feet. So an assisted living facility generates 4.9 trips per day per 1,000 square feet, it's 4.9. Other uses that would be allowed in Neighborhood Service, a medical office, for example, would generate 35 trips per 1,000 square feet, so much larger. A minor retail location would generate 63 trips per thousand. A bank, 100 trips per thousand. A convenience store without gas station, 762 trips per day per 1,000 square feet. So the assisted living at 4.9 only is a very quiet and low-intensive traffic use for this area. Finally, we are... Uh, finally, uh, we are mitigating the visual impact, uh, with this by limiting it to one story. Uh, the applicant, uh, will also agree to the, uh, architectural styles, uh, condition, material and styles condition. Again, just recognizing that those are renderings and there's going to be some changes and fluctuations in the final version, but they, they do agree to that condition. Uh, and also just, uh, you know, as a matter of, uh, condition of the UDC, there are buffer requirements that will have to follow. So anyway, just, that's the summary and, uh, be happy to answer questions, but, uh, we seek your favorable consideration. Thank you.
Okay. This report, moving in our agenda to item number three, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposed request. Mayor Proton, would you present these items?
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against this agenda item? Second time, is there anyone wishing to speak for or against this agenda item?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to, uh, comment on the agenda item.
Okay, would you state your name and your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes?
Sure thing.
Other than that.
Absolutely, thank you, guys. My name is Chris Puente, and I'm at thirty-five eighteen Pine Chase Drive. Uh, talking with, uh, the neighbors, there are some serious concerns with the permit application as it, as it, uh, was presented to us. Uh, and the biggest threat would be, would be flood risk at this point. As you've showed on the map, you've got one side, you've got a Home Depot and a, across the way on the other side, you've got a Walmart with all the parking that goes with those. You've got a ton of concrete in this area already. And, uh, a thirty-four thousand square foot facility, um, a parking lot that goes with it, uh, that's, that's going to increase flood risk, not just for your, uh, nearby neighborhoods, your, your Pine Hollows, your, uh, Willow Lake Estates, but, I mean, you guys know, there's a ripple effect. You're going to have a domino effect, uh, when the next big one hits. So it's a huge concern. Um, and then the two big Ts are also a big concern for the area, uh, traffic and trash. Um, you know, you pointed out, you've got Broadway and, and Dixie Farm there, that's one of the busiest intersections in Pearland. And again, we're just going to insert, uh, a multi-residence facility here, uh, in the middle of it. So we're going to add concrete, uh, we're going to add non-forest, uh, you know, uh, surface, we're going to add traffic right here in area that's already inundated with those, those things. Uh, trash, of course, um, you know, essentially, we're talking about, uh, an apartment building worth of trash, uh, but this clientele, of course, is going to, they're going to generate medical waste as well. If you've got food services on site, uh, we're going to add that as well. So it really doesn't matter where you position your dumpsters and things like that, you're going to add, um, the, the stench concerns, uh, the sanitation concerns for nearby, for your neighbors, I mean, for the people who are closest to you when you, uh, you're going to put it here. So that's, that's a concern that's been raised as well. Um, I think, I think just the biggest point is this, I was kind of surprised, see, it's coming to my mailbox, uh, moved here from Houston where, uh, some pretty loose zoning decisions that get made and, and expose neighbors to traffic, trash, flood, sanitation concerns, and that, that, that red flag went off for me, uh, with, and some of my neighbors with this as well. But anyway, uh, thank you, guys, for the time. I'll, I'll turn it back over to you.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Puente. Uh, is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this agenda item? Hi, Mayor, that was the third request. It looks like that's, uh, all the people that wish to speak.
Okay, right information on the record. Let's move to item number B, which is an opportunity in our agenda for the planning commission, the city council, and the staff to, uh, present their follow comments and questions, uh, at this point, starting with the planning commission, Madam Cade. Madam Cade? Introduce, if one of your council member, uh, members to make a presentation if they can.
Um, Commissioner Earl, do you have any comments?
No, no comments at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Dansey?
Uh, I just would say, uh, the neighborhood services and the CUP does allow for the, the, uh, extra la, layer of control regarding this particular piece of property, so, uh, other than that, I, I don't have any other comments.
Uh, Commissioner Wicker? I don't see you.
Uh, this is Commissioner Wicker. Uh, my only, uh, concern is, uh, aside from, uh, possible, if the detention pond is adequately, uh, designed, and I presume it's, if the staff has reviewed it is, uh, the other concern, uh, has to do with the buffering between the, um, uh, Home Depot, um, and the, the back of this, uh, community facility, um, there, there's a lot of trucks that come in there, and I don't know if, um, if I was retired, I don't know if I'd want to be listening to the lot of trucks without some sort of, uh, effort to minimize, uh, the noise that could be done, I guess, with, uh, uh, plants, uh, or with the wall of some sort. And I don't know if any consideration has been given there, but, uh, that's, that concludes my, uh, concerns.
And this is Commissioner Cade, and I, I, um, echo the, um, resident that spoke, the traffic concerns, and this is something we talked about previously on that, right there in that stretch of Dixie Farm Road, traffic is really bad getting out of the Home Depot and Walmart, they're right across from each other. There's not a light there, and the traffic is, is precarious, and, um, those cut-throughs are, are problems, and, um, I think the traffic would be bad right there. I, the, on the backside of that, um, of the development, there's houses, and so I know Alan did address the, um, the buffers, so, and, but the buffer against Home Depot would also be something to think about. And the lighting, if I, if I was retired and in a memory care facility, you know, the lighting and the trucks would be a problem, and also there's going to be ambulances coming in and out of there possibly, and the neighbors, you know, the noise, so buffering on all sides, I guess, except for against the street, would be something to think about. That's all, thank you.
So I complete the planning commission report? Out of turn.
Mayor, unless somebody had something else to add, the, uh, planning and zoning commission is complete, thank you.
Okay, moving in our agenda to item number two. City council. Comments and, and, starting with Councilmember Orlando?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just wanted to run through, uh, a few questions, uh, to address the, the concerns of the Mr. Puente who spoke and some other feedback we've gotten. Uh, can staff speak to the, uh, also as mentioned by Mr. Wicker, the detention pond and, and, uh, the determination that's made to, eh, ensure that's adequate to prevent, uh, increased flooding risk?
Uh, sure thing. Uh, so the detention will have to be designed for the amount of impervious coverage that is, uh, accompanied with this development. Um, that rate, uh, is determined by our engineering department, uh, and they will have to, uh, have that capacity on site, uh, for the detention pond.
Got you. Okay, so, uh, I, I feel comfortable with that. Uh, moving on to the traffic issue, um, I, I share the concern, um, looking at the diagram, just that you could exit this development and turn right. Uh, you could also, i- it appears cut across and, and make a left. I- is there any, um, I, I, I guess my question is, when would it be determined that we might want to make, we might want to close that off, uh, in a way where you could only make a right turn out of this in addition to a, a right turn out of the, the Walmart parking lot? If that makes sense?
Oh, yes. So we, uh, we shared this site plan, uh, with our, uh, traffic engineer. Um, and this is on the lighter side of types of development. Um, you know, when the other pieces of the puzzle of what the future development come in, uh, you know, we may end up doing some, some write, write-in restricting, uh, but without those additional pieces of knowing what the future development will hold, um, it's difficult to determine exactly how much, uh, trip generation, uh, and to what level would, uh, require that need.
Got you. Okay, and then to, uh, going along with the applicant's comments, I mean, can we just get, i- if it's any assurance to the, the folks who live back there? I mean, uh, looking at the land use matrix, i- it looks to me like, you know, if tomorrow a barber shop or a tanning studio, um, a funeral home, a, a laundromat, any other, any number of businesses, uh, wanted to go and set up shop today, they would be able to do that without coming before the city and, and getting a conditional use permit? They would be able to do that by right, eh, is that correct?
That is correct. There are uses that are allowed by right, and there are uses that are allowed by conditional use permit within the neighborhood services zoning district.
Sure, so, uh, you know, un, um, certainly understand the, the concern of having, uh, having a business pop up there, but I guess just wanted to make clear that, um, make clear that there, this is probably one of the lowest traffic uses that, that could go in there, and many of the other ones wouldn't even come before the council or the planning zoning commission, uh, for an approval. Um, with that, I, I, I think those are, those are the only concerns I have. I, I would, um, I, I would in, invite the opportunity to take a look at restricting the, the right, restricting that road to a right turn. Uh, at Dixie Farm, I, I think it's, it's pretty difficult to cross there, as I've experienced and as we've heard, uh, i- over the course of multiple applications. Um, but I, I don't think that the, this proposal should be contingent on that, as, like we said, a, a lot of other things could go in there, uh, tomorrow, um, there, there would be much higher traffic. So, uh, I, I think that my concerns for this are, are addressed. Thank you.
Moving to Councilmember Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Councilman Orlando hit on, uh, a bunch of topics, and I guess just to confirm, in the CUP, we are limiting the development to a single story? Is that correct?
Uh, correct, to the renderings that were proposed, and what was proposed was only a single story.
Okay. And in terms of the, the, uh, the CUP for the area, is it restricted? Uh, I mean, it's not restricted to this, uh, land use map or layout, is it, I guess, is it restrictive to this area? I guess what, what I would be concerned about, if we pass the CUP, um, can the memory care go on the, the far, uh, on, on the back of the property that abuts the Pine Hollow neighborhood?
I'm looking up to s- to make sure that the resolution, uh, was not contingent on the site plan and only on the, uh, the, the side, uh, elevations.
I can answer that for, for you, uh, Martin. Uh, it's actually not contingent on the site plan, the only, um, elements that would be attached to the resolution is the elevation, the rendering, so it's not attached to the site plan.
Okay, I, I guess if, if, uh, the applicant's still online, uh, would there be any issue with maybe restricting the, the CUP to just the west side or the north side, uh, of the pipeline? Alan?
Josh, can you see if Alan is around, so he can bring him back here?
Yes, hang on just a second, let me see if I can get him. How much can you hear now?
He's still on the call.
Okay, there you go.
I'm still here, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, got you now.
Okay. Uh, yeah, so to answer the question, uh, yes, uh, we could agree, uh, to, uh, limit the assisted living to just, say, uh, I know the directions are a little wonky there, but, uh, west of the pipeline easement, um, you know, between Dixie Farm Road and the pipeline easement, we could agree to that condition.
Okay, thank you. I, and I guess to, to everybody else, I'd be a fan of that, just to give the, the neighborhood behind it a little bit more protection, um, but yet not limit the developer, developer to the, to the given site plan that's conceptual in nature. And that's all my comments, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Mayor, if I could step in for just a minute, this is Lawrence with the Labor Department. Uh, Mr. Carbone, in response to one of your issues in regards to it being single-story, um, if, if you feel as though architectural style and materials attached in the attached renderings does not specifically address a single story, and I would say to, I would suggest that you add, um, or, or make clear in your, whoever makes the motion when we get to it, uh, that you want this to not exceed one square. Some people might suggest that styles and materials are talking about the product that it's being put up against, uh, you know, Mission Style or Urban, or they might not know that style meant single story, even though that's what we're intending it to be.
All right, thank you.
I complete your report, there, Councilman Carbone?
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving in our next item, Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I had a lot of the same concerns that Councilman Orlando and Councilman Carbone had, so I'm not going to be redundant and waste time, but, uh, Alan, did you say that, uh, the developer would agree to, if I understood you correctly, to only development east of the pipeline easement? I'm sorry, west of the pipeline easement?
Other than the turnaround?
This is Alan, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, what they would agree is that the assisted living, uh, would be limited, as far as the CUP, would be limited to west of the, uh, pipelines, but the neighborhood service, you know, zoning would still apply to the entire track. So there could be something developed east of the pipelines, uh, in the future, uh, but they are, uh, would agree that the, uh, assisted living would be limited to the west of the pipelines.
Okay, oh, I guess my concern is that the neighborhood that's east of the property, uh, has the highest concentration of, of homes, and I just want to make sure that we've got enough of a buffer, um, to insulate both the development, the people in the development and the people in the neighborhood, and also making sure the lighting is not a nuisance to those people in the neighborhood. Um, is, is that part of the, can we make that part of the plan also? What kind of zoning are we requiring? I know zoning, what kind of, uh, buffer?
The buffer, the buffer that's required for this property is a six-foot masonry wall with a twenty-five-foot landscape buffer or a thirty-foot landscape buffer without the masonry wall.
Okay, um, all right, I, I think this would be a good development, and it's like, uh, Councilman Orlando and, and, uh, Carbone said, eh, there's some, a lot of other businesses that could be, uh, built there by right, um, and, uh, would create, uh, a, a lot more traffic, probably a lot more noise, so, uh, I, I don't have a problem with it. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, moving to, Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, got basically the same kind of comments going through, um, the, uh, matrix for the different uses that are allowed under neighborhood services, and there's just so much on here that looks like it would have a greater impact than this particular use. So I don't have an issue with it at all, and I don't want to be a dead comment horse, so, that's all I have, I appreciate it.
Okay, moving, Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Alan, you still on the line?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes. So, looking at this, um, looking at this, I guess it's, um, page sixteen of thirty-four, where it has the, uh, layout that abuts to Dixie Farm. I'm, I'm looking at this, and on the backside between Home Depot and the senior living center, what is that area? Is that green space, or is that going to be parking?
Uh, so, are you looking at the site plan?
Um, no, I'm, I'm just looking at, um, page sixteen, I guess it'd be page sixteen.
Give me a minute.
Sixteen thirty-four is the schematic design plan.
Yeah, schematic design.
Which is the site plan.
Yeah, so, um, so kind of, uh, within the, the building, let's say it's kind of a U shape. Uh, and so within that courtyard area, the, that's what they, that would be sort of a, in a memory care world, they call that a, a wander garden. Uh, and so it would be an area that would be contained for the patients to be able to be outside but in a safe and secure area, uh, within that courtyard area. And then, uh, adjacent to the, um, um, the Home Depot on the very north line would be whatever, you know, buffers are required there. And I, I believe that dash line that runs along there is some sort of a drainage, drainage that's pre-existing.
Okay. I, I was just wondering, cause in, in, in the package here where it talks about, you know, the, the, uh, criterias, um, where the, the first criteria is consistent with comprehensive plan policy analysis, uh, yes, assisted living is needed housing confronted in the community and furthers the housing diversity goals of the comprehensive plan. My issue is where it talks about the proposed uses and an i- is an ideal transitional, uh, use between commercial and single-family zoning districts. But if I look at this drawing, there's a future development on the south side of this, which, you know, we're not going to have any say in that. If it's, uh, truly a, a Neighborhood Services, um, facility that goes in there, then, you know, that's really technically not going to be a transition into the residential since you have residential on the south side. Um, and I, and I also have concerns just as other council members with the, uh, future development, uh, plot that backs up to Pine Hollow. Uh, I was wondering, since that's going to be a courtyard area, would it be possible to flip that and have the Senior Living Center on the south side of that to where the courtyard was facing southward? I know the road would have to jog around a little bit there, but I, I would, I would much further, I'd much, um, much more appreciate it if it was that way. Um, that way you're going to put all of your, uh, all of your facilities on the north side there that abut, abut to, you know, a commercial type, um, area opposed to impeding in onto a residential area.
Um, yeah, this, this is Alan again. Um, you know, this is conceptual at this point, so I suppose that's possible. Uh, but, you know, since the, uh, the ordinance was changed a couple of years ago with regard to how CUPs are processed and the site plan is no longer, you know, part of the specific approval. Um, you know, we, we knew that that was an option, that it might be moved. And so, uh, again, we just, we don't know exactly where it's going to be. This is our best guess. Uh, but I'd have to, uh, circle back with, uh, the owner of the property as well as the developer of the memory care before we could make, uh, a specific commitment to lock down, you know, the site plan in the, uh, CUP ordinance. It's not a bad idea, uh, what you're suggesting. I just, uh, am not able to commit to that this evening.
Would you be able to speak to, if, if on that plot and Neighborhood Services, uh, just another Neighborhood Services, um, development was, uh, was developed there, what would be the, um, what would be the screening requirements and, and what other, you know, what would be required without any kind of conditions on our part to, to, uh, address concerns, uh, about privacy and noise and lighting that, that folks in that neighborhood might feel?
Uh, this is Alan. I'll have to, I'd have to defer back to the staff on, to answer that one. I don't know the answer.
The answer would be, it would be one of two options. One would be twenty-five foot landscape buffer with, uh, eight fence or thirty-foot landscape buffer with, uh, three feet. And, and there's specific requirements of how many, um, caliber inches that would be required landscape buffer. So either thirty-foot landscape buffer, uh, thirty-foot landscape buffer or twenty-five with, uh, eight fence.
Does that address any of your concerns, Member Moore?
Yes and no.
That's Mr. Report, that's, uh, Councilmember Moore?
That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Good. Okay, moving in our process here to Councilmember Owen, so I don't see his picture here.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, there you go.
He won't look at me, so I, I, I'm not going to turn a picture off. Yeah, I'll get, I, I talked to, uh, Alan today about Mr. Quentin, isn't it? And, uh, the things that he was concerned about, so I thought we'd address that. Um, and I was just wondering, uh, Alan or staff, are we going to ask for a, a TIA on this location here?
Uh, this, this is Alan. Uh, you know, we've anticipated that, you know, we'll need to do a TIA when the property is platted, uh, like, you know, most projects require. Uh, but, uh, you know, it's, it's a little bit of a chicken and the egg. You have to be able to know what you're going to put there and what, uh, you know, if this gets approved in order to do the TIA properly. But, uh, yeah, we do expect to do the TIA during plating if we get beyond this step.
Okay. And, uh, yeah, I was kind of wondering in that location, um, with the activity there, it seems like, you know, maybe we may have to have some kind of a, a stacking lane put in on both sides for, uh, uh, you know, going south and turning in to the location. Um, and then, you know, you've got your trash trucks and stuff like that coming in, your food service trucks, uh, bringing, you know, your food supplies there. So it's going to be, and that's pretty heavy traffic area here. So it may be better if you have some kind of stacking lane near as far, you know, or a few vehicles in order to do that, not impede the rest of the, uh, traffic on, on that area. One other thing, Alan there, unless you want to answer that first?
No, I was just going to say, you know, there is a, you know, a left turn lane now going into the Walmart driveway. Uh, there is not one going in the opposite direction. So that's, that certainly is something that would come up during the TIA process is the stacking space that would be needed in order to turn left into this property.
Okay. And, uh, on the, uh, pipeline easements back there in the back, um, I'm assuming that, uh, they have been contacted, uh, with the, uh, looking at, uh, the development that's going to be occurring there?
Uh, we've made preliminary contact just to get all the information in terms of what's there and, uh, depths and sizes and things like that. Uh, but we have not, uh, gone any further with them as far as crossing permits, uh, until we get a little further in the process.
Yeah, because I was wondering, have, with that type of facility coming in, would, you know, would they have to be those pipelines, uh, encapsulated within a certain distance of there? You know, you're not going to have people that can get out of there in a hurry if something did happen.
Yeah, that back piece of the property has some challenges, definitely.
Okay, so I just wanted to, you know, working with the pipeline, if they ever want to go in, uh, you know, they're able to go in, uh, encapsulate that area there to keep, you know, from a blowout, uh, if, if at all possible. And they're going to be, I guess, ultimately developing on both sides of the, uh, area. And I know we've, we've had to do that in, in other places, uh, in order to do that. But this would be something, I guess, that they would, uh, take a look at, you know, being developed that way and then looking at, at being a retirement community and being able, if something did happen, being able to get the people out in, in a big hurry.
Yeah, that, that's a good point, you know, that there'd be, uh, just that single crossing of the pipelines. And so, you know, at some point, you know, you have to do a cost benefit analysis of the, the cost of crossing the pipelines versus what can realistically be built there. Uh, and that's something that needs to happen. It's just a little further down the road in the planning process.
Yeah, I just wanted to know that it's probably too early to, to know how close that facility's going to be to that pipeline. There should be, you know, a, a footage easement there, you know, a, a distance from there.
Yeah, and I, I do not know those rules, but I know in the, uh, assisted living, uh, world, you know, there are specific requirements they have to follow, but I, I don't know those off the top of my head.
Yeah, and those, if, if they did go to more than, uh, one story, then, then the elevators would have to go in a couple of different locations there on the second floor. But anyway.
Yeah, these would, these would definitely be, just be single story.
Yeah. Okay, and the other questions, uh, went to, uh, ask Krista, did, uh, you answered those, uh, for me earlier today. So that's all I have.
Councilmember Owens?
That's it, Mayor.
Okay, let's move to item three, which is a good staff with an opportunity to do the wrap-up comments. Councilmember Bird?
Uh, so to wrap up, um, I believe we've discussed about the detention pond requirements. Um, we've talked about the agreement to have the facility west of the pipeline. Um, while we were discussing about the TIA, I went back to, uh, our traffic engineers' uh, email from earlier this morning. Uh, and just to read that off real, it said, uh, the CUP will require a traffic impact analysis to address the potential traffic generation, uh, of both the memory care facility and the future developments. Uh, additionally, this proposed site plan will need to be adjusted to include shared access to both adjacent properties. Uh, and then we have specific concerns that the traffic loading of all proposed developments of the conditional use permit will drive the need for additional traffic control at the intersection of Walmart and the development driveway with Dixie Farm Road. So that should, uh, wrap up the concerns and allow council to move forward.
I have one other question, uh, on there, Mayor, if I could, um, regarding the lighting. Uh, you know, for the, um, um, well, it would already been mentioned down over at Walmart, but also that in the, uh, place there at Home Depot, what the lighting is as far as having lighting pollution for that, that area, uh, there. And, and if you're just going to have a six-foot masonry fence or whatever, um, you know, behind the building, I don't know. You know, in a couple of other places, we, we've looked at the lighting adjacent to that. And then, uh, the, uh, lighting also on, on the building, uh, to cover that back area. And then also some of the things that, uh, had been previously discussed. So windows in the facility, uh, you know, toward the back to allow lighting into, in that facility itself, you know, in the rooms themselves. I don't know if that, that, that should be addressed or not, Alan. I have no idea.
Did I complete your report?
Yes, sir.
Did I, did I complete the staff report on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That information in the record. Let's, uh, let's remember that this is a joint special meeting, which is designed specifically the wording and the organization of the, of the agenda for a additional use permit requirement. And, uh, being a legal document, it, uh, we, we, it's developed into a building concept. So what we have discussed today, uh, it's, it gives us an opportunity to now to morph into a new, a city council new business item, which is what they, what this particular joint special meeting process is designed for. And, uh, so we have now a, a new council business item. And I'd like to ask Councilmember Carbone if he would present this for our consideration.
Thank you, Mayor. Consider, consideration of possible action resolution R twenty twenty, CUP twenty dash zero 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 five, with the additional stipulations that the assisted living use is only on the west side of the pipeline and the facility will be limited to a single story. So move.
Second, Councilmember Little?
We have a motion and a second. And, uh, we now, item secretary, I believe we have a motion and a second.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I had a comment, Mayor, if that's okay?
I would, uh, allow you to do that, yes.
Um, in addition to the single story amendment, I, I wanted to, uh, add the substantial conformance amendment. Uh, I believe that's not on there?
I believe this is substantial conformance language is already in the draft resolution.
Okay, so that'll stay. And then, my only, my only other question then was, you know, what, what are we, by, um, by making sure that the memory care center is not west of the pipeline and closer to the neighborhood, what are we accomplishing with that? Because from my perspective, we would rather the memory care center abut the neighborhood and then the other Neighborhood Service uses be out on Dixie Farm. But if, if we require the, uh, if we say the memory care center cannot be over there, um, then we just leave that vacant for a, a barber or a, a bank or, uh, um, a- any number of other businesses to pop up over there. So I guess I just want to make sure I understand what we're trying to do with that.
So staff, I would give a response to that?
I think from my standpoint, it, it was in response to the, the adjoining neighborhood concerned with the memory care facility coming in, abutting them, uh, abutting that neighborhood. So, uh, I'm, I'm fine removing it if you'd like, but that was, in my opinion, was in response to the neighborhood.
I guess, I just want to make sure I understand then, though, that we would pre- prevent it from, in this round of development, but then tomorrow, um, you know, that could be spun off, that portion of it could be spun off and you could have a much higher traffic, much more disturbing thing for the neighborhood go in over there.
You could, a- as of the, the whole, the whole site.
Sure. So I, I guess I, I just feel per Member Moore's comments about, you know, could you guys retool this, uh, in order to, to put the less, um, the less disturbing components of the development closer to the neighborhood? I, I feel like that, that considered amendment would prevent them from doing that. So I, I would be, uh, willing to, you know, I'm supportive of the development, but would be, uh, opposed to that amendment in particular.
I'm fine removing it.
Do, do you have a motion on that? Do I get a second on it?
Yeah, Mayor, I'll amend the, make a motion, we amend to remove the language restricting the assisted living to the west side of pipeline. Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have amended motion. Uh, that's, uh, that secretary?
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez? Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
He's absent.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
The motion passes, um, six to zero to, for the original motion, um, to, um, amend.
Okay, so we now have amended motion on the table? Does the council have any other comments at this point? I'll get up to the council for your comments and we'd welcome them.
Don't hear, Mayor?
Don't hear any? Good. Madam Secretary, I believe we have amended motion on the table.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero to remove, um, the use by the west, west side of the facility.
Okay. With that action, we have completed.
I, I, I think those were reversed.
I'm sorry?
That was the vote on the, that was the vote on the actual CUP.
Original. Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
CUP, yeah. Uh, we have, which then brings us to, uh, we had an emotion, then we had amended motion. And you just passed an amended motion. Now we have the amended motion on the table, right?
I think we're done.
Uh, Mayor, we are done. We, there was a motion to amend- No, Mayor, we are done. We, there was a motion to amend the original motion, and that vote was approved by majority of council. And then there was a a vote on the motion amended, and then that was a, the uh, that was also approved. And so now it would be time to adjourn.
Okay. I want to make sure everybody understood where we were, because these are, these joint public uh special meetings are very, very serious and very, moving to item uh to adjournment, which I shall do. I'm getting my clock here to work.
Seven thirty-six, Mayor.
It's seven forty-five, seven forty-six. You're right.